13th 2021 meeting of the City of Brentwood Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America. Through the Republic, for which it stands. One nation.
One nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Divisible.
Divisible.
Liberty.
Justice. Justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Wilkins.
Harry Builderback, Michael Damian.
Here.
Mark Favazo.
Yeah.
Rebecca Jacobs.
Here.
Jeff Moore. Paul Moran. Hart Nelson.
Here.
John Newberger. John Ritter. Lisa Shearing.
Lisa.
Tom Shipley.
Here.
Okay, sounds like we have a quorum. Either Ms. Wilkins or Ms. Kirkamire, I see a note from Brandon Harp to all panelists. Can you add me to the group? Not sure. Brandon Harp is.
Brandon Harp is our civil engineer, so he'll have a presentation speaking role. So if you could please add him as a panelist, that would allow him to be a part of this, please.
Sounds like a reasonable request. All right, commissioners, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the November 18th meeting minutes? And are there any objections to approving said minutes by acclamation?
No reaction.
Seeing none, they'll be approved. No old business, one item under new business this evening, which is a site development plan for an office building at 8419 Manchester Road. Is the applicant here today?
Yes, Todd Sweeney with Navigate Building Solutions.
Mr. Sweeney, if you could just introduce your application and whoever's going to present on your behalf.
Wonderful, I'm here today. First of all, Todd Sweeney, we're very excited. We are a consulting firm, as many of you know, that represents public agencies for the design and construction of new renovated facilities. We've had tremendous amount of growth. We've actually grown to 13 employees and see that growth raising to 30 in the next five years. We've outgrown our current rental space, looking for a new home and a pure property in the Brentwood-bound area on Manchester Road, as you're familiar with, at 8419 Manchester Road. It's our intent, with your blessing, to build a office building in there that has the ability for expansion to allow us to grow into that space, which is why the 8500 is, was on the application, approximately 500, it's actually 83,000, 8300, excuse me. 83,000 might blow my budget. Craig and I are partners in this deal as owners of Navigate, and we're looking for the 8300 square feet. Again, half of it would be occupied now with the fact that we'd fully occupy the building within five years. The parking count that's being proposed is 39. That also is associated with the future growth and the requirements that we see in the organization of, and how we offer our services as an entity in the region. We're excited with 30 new employees. Obviously, that's the intent of Brentwood, is to bring in professionals and have employees and people that are stopping and buying stuff on the way in and the way out. Also, employees that may potentially land here in Brentwood in a community that we actually feel very excited about. First potential leadership, and obviously the Brentwood bound. These people tend to move towards where they work, and then we see that as a potential for what we bring and offer as an organization, trying to build in your community. We do have three colleagues here with us. Obviously, you know Craig is my partner, but we have three colleagues here that we'd like to participate in the discussion. One is Brandon Harp, who's our civil engineer. We have Cody Henderson, who's our architect. We also have Mike Lawless, that's involved with the MEP. Before going there, I do want to suggest that the reason why we brought Mike is also to talk about the lighting question that came up. But also, one other thing that I feel to mention that we're pretty excited about, but I can't say it's vetted. So don't put in press that we're building a net zero building. But there is a strong position, and Mike's been helping us with this, and the whole team has, to do a net zero building. The first privately owned, commercial net zero building certified by the Living Building Institute in the state of Missouri. It could be a really cool thing. Has a lot to do with why we're focused on a single-story building. Has a lot to do with why we are placing the building and the strategies we have behind this. In fact, we have all of our solar proposals coming in on Friday, and have been actively working with them from everything, from the parapet in the front that causes too much shade on the roof, believe it or not, to where we place our units and north side, south side. So all those things are coming to fruition. It could be a possibility, and I think that'd be another feather in cap for Brentwood, should we pull it off, and certainly would be for us in our organization. So with that, I'd like to turn over to Brandon, if I may, unless you have any questions of me.
Well, when do we know whether or not we're gonna have that feather in our cap?
I know, right? By the end of the month is what we're targeting. We're hoping that, you know, obviously, the city will approve this project. If they approve the project, it would occur in February. At the same time, we have to pull that final trigger. Everything we do on here has to be balanced with the notion that Craig and I are private developers. We simply do not have the funds to not have a return on investment in everything we do. So the notion that it's possible, it's pretty exciting, and we're certainly working towards that and will keep you abreast.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. As was mentioned, my name is Brandon Harp. I'm a principal at CEDC. We're civil engineers here in St. Louis. And if you'd be okay, I'd like to share my screen. Can you authorize that, please?
Okay, should be able to now.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna go through just some of the details of our petition, our project and our request. Again, we're here for case number 21-01. It's a request from this commission for a site development plan approval. We have submitted to you a detailed engineered site development plan, a detailed landscape plan, a lighting plan, architectural elevations, and there's been a third-party review of the traffic considerations for this development. So you should have all those documents in your package. I think everyone is familiar with this site, but it's 8419 Manchester Road, which is the northeast corner of Manchester and Helen. The size of the property is .73 acres. It's roughly 162 feet by 195, and it's zoned MC, City of Brentwood. The site currently is vacant, as you're aware. One note of the existing site is that there's quite a bit of topographic change across this property. In the upper right or the northeast corner of the property, it's about an elevation 465. In the lower left corner of the property, or the southwest, it's about 448. So as I talk a little bit about the site plan, I'm gonna reference this a little bit, because there is just over 17 feet of fall across this very short site. And looking at how we're proposing to develop this, and why everything is positioned the way it is, a lot of it has to do with the topography of this piece of property. As Todd mentioned, what we're proposing is an 8,360-square-foot, single-story building, roughly 140 feet long and 60 feet deep. We have a 39-space parking lot on the southern side of the building. In addition to that, we have a full access curb cut about 50 feet north of Manchester Road on Helen Road on the side street. And also on this site plan, you can see this dark black line that is a retaining wall that will allow us to make some of the grade differential between the site and the adjacent residential properties to the north and to the east, as well as a six-foot-high site-proof fence along the north and the east property line between us and the residential pieces of property. In addition to that, we are proposing a sidewalk along Helen, which will extend from the Manchester Road sidewalk and roadway improvements that MoDOT will be pursuing and building along the southern part of our property. We will be extending that sidewalk northerly up Helen on the east side along the right-of-way adjacent to our property. In addition to the building and the parking lot, the drive entrance to the sidewalks, we do have a sidewalk along the front of the building, and we also have a outdoor small patio in the back of the building and an ADA-compliant sidewalk on the back of our building, which goes out to the sidewalk on Helen. The building, as planned, is really separated into, there's a common corridor in the middle, which will have restrooms and things of that nature. So there will be an accessible way for this building to discharge out the north side of this building and be able to get the ADA route out to Helen. We cannot get it out of the front just because of the topographic considerations that I had mentioned earlier. And again, the building was placed on the northern side of this property for a couple of reasons. One is that the entire southern part of this property is the floodplain, and we would be unable to get any permits at this time if that building was on the southern part of this property. By also moving it to the north, what it allows us to do is to place the building such that we can use the parking lot to work with the topography and make a gradient transition from the drive entrance on Helen up to the main part of the building. So we can use this parking lot as a grading transition to put this building up on a plateau on this northern part of this piece of property. There is also, based on geotechnical information that we received, there is significant amount of rock up in this upper-right corner. So the idea would be to get this building up as high as possible. We are on the low side of this retaining wall. The retaining wall, which again is this dark black line on the northeast, partial in the north and partial in the west, is about eight-foot-high at the highest point, and tapers down to zero feet in each direction. The parking lot, again, is situated here on the south, and it's laid out with a two-bay situation. So when we have access into Helen, there's circulation around the parking lot, so there's no dead-end parking lot, which is desired by not only the users of this building, but also fire district, ambulatory district, emergency responders, things of that nature. We always try to maintain a non-dead-end parking lot. So the building is pushed north such that we can get a full bay parking here with full access around the perimeter, so there's no dead-end parking. Also, as requested by the city, we are proposing a cross-axis easement, and that would basically go from the drive entrance on Helen. It would extend easterly to our east property line. So this driveline here would have a 23-foot-wide cross-axis easement, which would be a document that would be developed and recorded that would give access rights to the adjacent properties to comply with the city's access management guidelines. If there's any questions regarding the site plan, I can answer those now. If not, I'm gonna let Cody go through and talk about some of the architecture, and then we can have a question and answer after he gets completed. That's fine, you can proceed with Cody.
Thank you. And if I could get access to share my screen, please?
You should have access.
Thank you. So as Brandon had mentioned, in the packet that you all received, we had the elevations, a preliminary floor plan, and overall renderings of the building that we are proposing for this site. The south side of the building, which is what is facing Manchester, will consist of a brick look fiber cement, which are these two darker-red areas, a stone look, which will be underneath each of the window systems, and work as a main element here at the main entrance. And then right over the main entrance of the building, we'll be doing a wood look, which also meets the requirements for the zoning of the MC area by elevating our parapet to various heights over keeping that 50-foot distance with the varying heights as required. Also introducing those three different colors minimum that allow for an architectural look that is aesthetically pleasing, and it also brings it all down to a human scale for people walking on Manchester. From the west side, which is where Helen is, we will continue that look around the side with the brick look and the stone look below. Each of these pilasters here also vary the depth of the exterior wall to give a little bit of relief and to provide shadow lines for a better aesthetic, along with sun shades above the windows here. The north and the east side of the building, which actually faces the retaining wall and the site-proof fence, that'll be a lap siding, cement, fiber cement lap siding down both of those sides with the windows looking into the office. The view you see here is actually from the corner of Helen and Manchester. This gives you an idea of the gradient that we're working with, going from the height of Manchester up to where the building sits on the property. And then another view closer to the building, it helps you to see our shadow lines and how we helped worked with the facade to really bring out those shadow lines and present different depths to the facade itself. And we had also included various photos of the existing sites. So as you can see here, standing at Manchester looking north, there's an existing privacy fence here, all of this grades up. There's an existing garage that is next to the property on the northwest corner. And I know there was a question that was brought up about the mechanical screening, so I'll go ahead and answer that at the moment. As you saw from the previous rendering, especially the one facing from Manchester, we actually modeled the rooftop units that will be, that are being proposed to go onto this building to actual size, to ensure that these parapets were high enough where you cannot see any of the rooftop units from the main road from Helen or from Manchester. So here are rooftop units centralized in the building. Preliminary floor plan, just like Brandon had mentioned, central corridor going back to the back area, restrooms, which are available for both tenants. Straight-on view from the south of Manchester. This is a view from northwest above the building, up Helen. So again, we have the rooftop units modeled in this, which we are not able to see from a full-height person standing there. This is a view from one of the properties to the north, looking back at the building with site-proof fence, and then the building beyond the rooftop units are screened by a parapet. This is from the property that is to the northeast. And then the property directly to the east. And this is just a view from inside the site-proof fence. Granted, the retaining wall was not modeled completely to zero out, but this gives you an idea of the height of this retaining wall with where the building sits.
Could you go back to the one, sorry, just to the, from the property of the east again? It was the last slide. Okay. It looks like there's a couple properties there. Is that the northernmost one, or is that, that looks like the southernmost one?
This is the southernmost one.
Okay.
I believe the property that is just the south of this is the commercial property.
Correct, okay, thank you.
And then this also gives you sort of an overhead look of the residential properties, and then the commercial property is over here. So we'll have that site-proof fence running around and the building placed. Are there any questions?
Okay, how about this site-proof fence? Is that six foot?
Yes.
All the way around?
Yes, it's six foot.
Okay, have you heard anything from or communicated with any of these residents to the east?
I have not personally.
No one on the applicant's team?
Sorry, I was muted. No, nobody on the applicant's team has reached out to the neighbors.
Okay, well, we'll see if they're here today. Looks like we may have one person there. Obviously, we're concerned about their view. What was the view, Ms. Kirkamire, or if the applicant knows? What was the fence situation when Tesson Farms was there with regard to the residents to the east?
I can't answer that.
I do know that they had a lot of vegetation and growth that was asked to be removed, so we actually took it down. It looks like Chris Pullman suggested there was a hurricane fence. I'm not sure what that is with the note at the bottom of the screen. But no, there was a lot of congestion and overgrowth that was requested by the neighbors that they'd be removed, so we immediately took that down, which left it open to Manchester. So you have a visual of the street to Manchester.
And then how about, you had one, really one recommendation, two recommendations from CBB. One was that a cross-access easement be dedicated, and you all are amenable to that?
Yes.
And then the other was, well, they had identified a request, frankly, a concern with your entrance off of Helen, that there could be a queue of cars that would back up onto Manchester. What are, to remedy that concern, they suggested locating the entrance a bit farther north. Did you see that recommendation?
We did. Brandon, do you want to respond to that, or you want me to fill in the blanks?
Yes, yes, we did see that, and I think what Mr. Cannon had written in his report is that it was a suggestion and something maybe to look at, but it may not be warranted due to the fact that everything north will stay residential from us. And I think the dimension in there was measured like 40 feet. It's actually about 50 feet to the outgoing car in our entrance, which would really be the conflict point, the car coming out. But the problem is moving the entrance north, it doesn't work with the topography of the site, because we have to use that parking lot as a grading transition from the Helen drive entrance to get the building to where it needs to be. If we slide that build, drive entrance north, we don't, it doesn't work with the topography, and the building finished floor would have to come down quite a bit, and that would come down, that would require a larger retaining wall, removal of additional rock, removal of additional fill, things of that nature. So it doesn't work really well there. So I know that is something he wrote in his report to maybe look at, but I didn't think it was necessarily maybe a direction of a requirement, just because that we're the only commercial property to the depth of the commercial district. Everything northwest is gonna be residential. And when this development is coming in in the AM, you know, they're going out in the PM, so there wouldn't anticipate to be much conflict there, in my opinion.
And I will say, though, we did take that very seriously. It was important to us to recognize all your comments. There's a couple of things I'd like to add on to that. The thought on the site access, if we looked at pulling that up north versus south, and what it did is it draws you right into the residential lot behind the commercial space that we're actually trying to create the cross-axis easement with. So it was the second reason why we were like, man, if we pull it down to the front, it really draws a nice clean line along Manchester and gives everybody the flexibility then to drive, you know, on the same cross-axis. I'm saying the words wrong, but you know what I mean. The next thing was, we looked at sightlines, and there was a thought on, and I think it was reflected in the report as well, that the 10 cars, you know, during the course of a day is, because of our type of business, we're getting very limited in and out. It's not retail, it's not anything that's gonna suggest that we're gonna have multiple cars coming in and out, in and out of the building. And there was an ability through the review that Brandon had done to actually queue, what was it, three cars on Helen before we would actually be in a situation where it would impact our outgoing traffic or incoming traffic. So we felt that was good. Another thing we did is we looked at the sightline. So one of the things you'll see is that corner is the only place really to put a monument sign. We changed the location of the monument sign so that it was running perpendicular to Manchester and lowered it as well as managed all of our landscaping, ensured there'd be no sightline conflicts with anybody coming in and out of the property. So those were some other things in addition to what Brandon said that I think support the notion that though, we certainly hear and respect your desire to move that back, we thought the same thing at one point. It just wasn't functionally working out to have more pros and cons, and we wanted to share that with you tonight.
Okay, I appreciate that. I did note that did not appear to be a particularly fervent recommendation on the part of Mr. Cannon. Ms. Kirkamire, anything else from a city perspective?
I think we covered all the points that were made in the staff report. I guess, though, one thing I just wanna make sure that the commission is clear on, the project certainly checks a lot of the boxes for what we described in the comp plan and the sub-area plan for the Manchester corridor, as well as the MC district requirements. So there are zoning requirements to follow in the MC district, but when you move back to the second half of that new district, it talks about development standards, and those things are more like recommendations. So those are the things you kind of have to view on a more project-by-project or parcel-by-parcel basis. But I do wanna say that I do think the project, you know, checks a lot of the boxes. But I do wanna make note about the two exceptions, because there are, as I said, zoning requirements to follow. So the zoning requirements on setbacks for this project, since it is a corner lot, the setback from Helen Avenue would be considered a front or right-of-way setback, and that is written in the zoning code to be 25 feet, and the project will be a little over 10 feet. The building will be a little bit like 10 feet from Helen. And then there also would be an exception to the rear setback along the north property line. The MC district would require having the, I'm sorry, I lost my paint here on that. Yeah, and the rear, also, it would be 25 feet, and it is proposing a 19-foot rear. So I think those kind of setback exceptions, though, can be done as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Alderman Review as a site plan review process. That's how the MC district was written. So that is why we don't have this discussion or have to go in front of the Board of Adjustment, but I thought it would be important to point that out. But otherwise, I think it was pretty thorough, and I think it's covered most of the notes in the staff report.
Good, thank you. Mr. Sweeney and anyone else? Did you have an opportunity to look at Mr. Frankie, Andrew Frankie's report on the landscape proposal?
We did. There was the suggestion of, well, the tree count was one comment that was brought up. I do remember that, and I remember that we'd actually gone through and evaluated that, and we wanted to make sure that was clear that we did have trees on both the islands. He had suggested additional islands. At this point, we didn't know how to incorporate any type of additional islands in the project. Nor did we know if that was, you know, we assumed that was, again, a suggestion. Was there any in particular, I'm sorry?
There was a request to add a tree along Manchester Road, which, you know, I don't think that's a sticking point for us. And then also, there's a comment about the site-proof fence. We've already talked about that. There's a question about screening. So our architect talked about mechanical screening. And then there was a note about transformer screening. You know, we'll have no issue with screening the transformer in the northwest side. And then about the trash enclosure screen. So, you know, Todd talked about how we're looking at doing a net-zero building, so we have a priority to be sustainable. And with that, one of the biggest issues from a consulting company is paper waste. So we're trying to move more to be paperless. And with that, what we have on the back of the site that's shown on CEDC or Civil Engineers drawing is a small trash box with a small fence that goes around it. So we don't have a dumpster, because we don't need a dumpster. We go through like two bags of trash a week. So we do have that shown on the civil engineering drawings, but I just want to point that out, because most people are probably looking for a big dumpster enclosure. That's not our intent for being a sustainable building, and that's how we're gonna handle that, is just having a small residential trash box in the back with the fence screening that. Those were some of the bigger comments. PDS talked about ADA accessibility, and I believe Brandon already spoke about how we're handling that. So I think those are some of the main comments that we get takeaways on and some of our responses for those.
Okay, I mean, generally, we do incorporate planning and design studios. As a city's landscape architects, we incorporate those into any approvals that we may, we would grant. So if there's something on there that didn't look palatable to you, now's the time to discuss it. Was there anything other than?
Do we want to touch on the comment on the parking lot lighting level?
Yes, please.
So we did, we saw, we read that comment. We also used IES standards as our guidance as well. Our average footprint was 1.6, and with the adjacent properties and trying to limit, you know, light egress at the edges of the property, we feel that we met the IES requirements. We also, you know, our calculations don't account for any of the contribution of lighting, you know, from Manchester Road or adjacent light sources as well.
All right, Mr. Frankie, do you have any response or recap of your report?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a couple.
Yeah, I've got, I, I've got a couple of responses. I, I wanted to first talk about the clarification about what we were asking on the parking lot from our standpoint of landscape islands. We requested three additional landscape islands, which would mean the reduction of our loss of three parking spaces. One would be along the road that's directly adjacent to Manchester Road to kind of split that up. The second one or the, the other two would be on either side of the, um, the ADA parking spaces. And that's, you guys are close, but you're still under, um, the requirements for those islands. And since you're overparked, we felt that was, it would be worth considering, uh, actually uh, adding those islands and reducing your parking number by three spaces. So just, uh, Todd, I think, I think, I don't know that it, I understood clearly from what you said, that that's what you, you understood. So we were wanting you guys to remove three parking spaces.
Yeah, that is, unfortunately, as, as you know, in, in the development world, three spaces is absolutely critical. And, uh, we've, it, to, to the operations and how we tend to utilize the building going forward in the future. So to lose three spaces is, is a remarkable delta. Um, what we can do though is, is we were 20 square feet off based on your calculations. I believe you said the minimum was 350 and we were 330, if I remember correctly, or somewhere in that neighborhood. We'd be happy to expand one of the islands to accommodate, um, that square footage to, to regain 20 square feet of space if, if necessary.
And, and, and that's fine, but the other place you're short is just in linear. Uh, the zoning ordinance has a requirement for providing, uh, landscape island and parking lot for linear distance. And you guys are over that. I, I, I'm not sure that, that I quite understand your perspective from losing three parking spaces when you're overparked with regard to the zoning ordinance, but I don't want to argue with you about parking spaces. That's just the perspective that we're coming from. Uh, one of the other items that we noted were your ADA compliance. And, um, we didn't, it wasn't clear to us that you were actually using the back of the building as your ADA, uh, entrance into the building. And, and so I looked at that a little bit closer. And when I'm looking at your interior floor plan that, that we just saw, I'm kind of curious about that because if you use that as an ADA access, you're actually going to have to go through the conference room. And if somebody's occupying the conference room, I'm not sure how somebody in Wiltshire would be able to access that. So I'm kind of curious on your take on, on how that, that's going to work.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the 2010 travel mandate, uh, for accessibility does give some provisions on hardship, uh, especially when we're dealing with topography on a development like this. And so, um, it's not even possible to get a, a ADA accessible route out the front of this building with the, the grade changes that we have on this piece of property. So what we did was to try to accommodate that, we added this sidewalk, which is a five, it's actually under a 5% slope. So it's not really a ramp. It's a sidewalk coming out of the back. Um, and I think architecturally, you know, we can work with the architect on how that works in this comment. It's a common conference room. It's a common, it, it would be used for both sides of that corridor. So, um, we, we can look into the co-compliance with that, but, um, you know, on a development like this, where we're dealing with topography, it's not always possible to even get an ADA route out to the public way. And there are some exceptions in the federal mandate that allow us some exemptions, but we are trying to accommodate that as much as we can by putting it out the back through the, the common conference room.
Brandon, I got a question for you about that. What standard allows you that exemption? I know there's a standard when you're along a roadway, but I didn't know that there was a standard when you're internal to a site. So what, what standard are you referencing that gives you that ability to vary that?
Well, internally to the site, we have the ADA parking spaces and the, in the route into the building from the space themselves. So that is covered in the front of the building. When we're talking about providing an ADA access out to the public way, there are topographical and other site restriction considerations that the 2010 ADA federal mandate allows to consider. Uh, so for example, if you're building a piece of property or developing a piece of property where you have a, a, a small site, but you have a, a 17 or nine foot grade change in, in a hundred feet or something along those lines, it's sometimes not possible to build a route. We've gotten those exceptions in the past through the federal mandate. So I, I think we're doing the best we can on a, on a piece of property that's got tough topographical considerations.
Since, since we're talking about the front of the building, um, we didn't see any ADA ramps from your ADA spaces?
The asphalt is, uh, raised up to be flush with the sidewalk at the ADA, um, unloading area. So there's no curve there. It's a zero curve.
Okay, we, we couldn't tell that from what we were reviewing. Um, how are you going to protect the signs? We, I think we'd made a comment about wheel stops because your signs are going to be in the parking spaces?
Yeah, I think the wheel stops are, um, are a good idea. I don't think they want the signs on their building. So, um, I would, I would propose we do do the wheel stops and put signs behind them.
All right. Um, I also have one comment about the, the site triangle, uh, on the entrance and, um, I've got a bit of a concern with that, that sign where it is because, um, I, I think it's, it, I think it's going to cause some visual confusion because I think people are really going to need to be able to see Manchester Road clearly because of your short access island in there. And I would, uh, again, I would suggest that sign be located, uh, somewhere else on the site so that there's no site conflict like down, maybe farther east, uh, along the, you're along the space between the parking and the sidewalk. Um, because I, I think, a- a- and it's associated landscape, because I think they're just having stuff there as visual confusion. Doesn't help the motorists turning out there. So, um, I, I'll just offer that up for your consideration. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't believe I had any other rebuttal, or not rebuttal, but any other elaboration on what we, what we.
So I guess we need to come to a conclusion on the parking spaces. I mean, to suggest that it's overparked, um, is disappointing Andy personally, but I get it. Uh, the, the standard set forth for parking are a minimum by communities we develop in. Uh, we exceeded those and felt that would be, uh, positively received. Um, the cross access easement, uh, potentially causes congestion on our lot that we were willing to accept on behalf of the city's desire to, uh, you know, ensure that cross access and the guidelines. Um, so again, to suggest that we're overparked and we can just eliminate parking spaces is disheartening. However, that's what it takes tonight to move this process forward, um, to gain some additional islands. Uh, we certainly, uh, are willing to do that. Like some concessions if possible, but we understand.
Oh, we're already considering your request to ignore the CBB recommendation on the entrance, right?
CBB, I'm not sure what that is.
Uh, Mr. Cannon's, uh, entrance on Helen.
Well, I'm going to push that back. I guess that would be the concession then, understand.
No, that's okay. No, I, I, I don't want this to, I think it's a very impressive presentation. So you guys did a great job. We look forward, uh, to hopefully working this out. Uh, before we, um, so Mr. Frankie did a great job on his presentation report as well. Uh, before we take that up, let's, uh, I want to hear, see if there's any residents out there, particularly if there's residents on the east. Uh, are there any residents that would like to address the commission on this application?
Mr. Chairman, I do think Mr. Cannon was trying to speak up.
Look at the chat, Mr. Chairman. There's a resident, I think, watching and he's, he has several questions that I'd like the answers to as well.
Okay, uh, well, Mr. Polium, would you like to address the commission?
Um, I don't, I don't know. Um, I guess it would have been nice. We have a, a house going in next door to us now 10 feet from us. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of in an irritating mood right now, but, um, and, you know, it would have just been nice to, to have a discussion when this was going to happen. We've been here for 20 years. Um, and that, that building is going to be very, very, very close to, you know, the, the back part of our lot. And we use that a lot. So we are concerned about the construction materials, the fence materials, um, the lamps that are going to be used and the lighting around the building, placement of trash, where trash is going to be, um, how it might impact this. There's a main sewer, um, um, access point in our yard and, um, for MSD. So, you know, how is that construction going to impact that? Um, you know, in a, I guess in a perfect world, we'd like the building to be moved a little closer to Manchester Road and down a little bit. But, you know, I, I've looked at that property a lot and know that there are limitations. And we've seen the floods when Tisson Farms was there and watched the flowers float away, um, and down into Black Creek. So, um, I, I guess, you know, just if we can get those questions answered about the lighting and the construction materials, that would help us out a little bit. And, um, would like to talk to, you know, um, the developers at some point, maybe. I think that's all we have.
No, we'd welcome that. So we can knock off all five points real quick. Um, you had mentioned fencing type. Cody, what, what's our, or Craig, what's our fence type right now?
A stained wood fence at six feet tall. And Mr. Pullman, are you, um, I don't know exactly what parcel you are. Are you the one with the stained wood fence?
No, we're the one that has the metal hurricane fence.
Okay.
Um, so there's not, it's a, it's pretty chintzy. So, um, but yeah, we're, we're in that property right there.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, we welcome our, the conversation to, uh, meet with you and everything. It would be similar to the neighbor to the north to give you a context on the fence.
Secondly, when it, the lighting question, um, we've, there's a lot of pros and cons. I mean, obviously you can't build the building if we're in the floodplain, but as far as lighting goes, I thought Mike did a really good job of trying to limit, uh, uh, exposure of any type of lighting off of the property. He could talk about that more. But another benefit is, is the way the building's set, you will have zero lighting spill over. I shouldn't say zero. You will have, um, limited lighting exposure at all in the evenings. Um, we're a nine to five op, oh, seven to, Craig and I get there at seven. We're a seven to, to 6:00 PM operation at best if we go to six. And there'll be no car headlights that are able to transfer, which would be the case if there was parking on the backside, because you'd have parking that was actually, um, parallel into your property. So those cars would park, shine their lights right into your building. And so none of that's going to occur. I think you'd be very, uh, happy with, with that as far as lighting. Did I answer that question? You want us to try to go more technical? Cause we certainly have Mike here who could do that.
That answer your question, Mr. Polium?
Yeah, I think we, we are a little concerned about the parking lot lights. How, how high are those lights going to be? And, and how much they will, uh, push into our property?
As part of the application, there's actually, uh, the, the lighting spill over plan that shows you the illumination on edge of the properties. It was actually questioned of, should it be more? That's what we're referring to. Um, Mike, do you want to add any questions on or a comment on the lighting? You need to unmute if you do.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. So, yeah, so we, our goal is to follow the, the IES standards, but also limit, you know, the, the egress of light to the adjacent spaces, you know, the adjacent properties. The light poles are, are 20 foot tall. They are LED lights are planned for them. They also have cutoffs on them, like I said, to, to limit that, that egress lighting. And if you look at the, you know, the plan, um, you know, once you get to the edges, you know, the north, you know, the north edge of the property and the, and the east edge, you know, we're, we're at a pretty, uh, you know, less than two, two foot candle, uh, light level at those locations. So.
And, and even at 20 feet, there's no way you'll see from your property, you'll see any light heads. You, you won't see that. None of them will extend above the building at the topography, the way it is back to your property. So it'll all be below the building.
I, I've got another question related to that with those spill over. I was, uh, looking at your lighting plan right now and it, it just cuts off right at the edge of the parking lot. But are there numbers that actually extend out farther than that, that, that have a val- a number value?
Mike?
Yep. So no, I was just trying to bring up the plan at the same time. So we, we cut off the, that's where the limit of the calculations are. There will be, you know, some lighting that extends, you know, beyond that line. That's just the limit of the parking lot and the limit of the calculation.
Is, is there a way that you could provide with the, you know, the spill over would be so we can make sure that there isn't any spilling over under the adjacent property?
Yeah, we can extend the, you know.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you.
Then, um, as far as trash goes, again, we're talking about having two residential, one recyclable and one regular, uh, trash dumpster, similar to what you have at your home. Uh, uh, maybe not, depending on what community you live in. Um, we would anticipate rolling that out to the curb for residential pickup. And that would be, you would never see those because they would certainly be, uh, behind our building and, and below your location, um, and fenced and, and, and screened even at that. So that's trash. You mentioned materials of the building. Uh, you, you could see from the facade, we're looking for both the pastry, uh, look as well as the, um, um, materials on the backside. Cody, you want to talk real quick about the materials of the building?
Yeah. So, uh, especially the materials that will be facing the properties, it's going to look like a, uh, it's a fiber cement lap siding. Um, it'll come through, come in essentially, I have some of the material actually here with me. Uh, it's got sort of a wood texture to it. So it goes along with the aesthetics of the front of the building as well, uh, which the front of the building facing Manchester, we use, you know, we're looking at a stone look, which looks like actual stone. It's got the depth. It's got the shadow lines of stone. Same with brick and, uh, slapwood look on the front as well. Um, very similar to the renderings that we had in that packet. Essentially, those are the colors that we are looking at and the, uh, material types that we are looking at.
So facing Manchester and Helen, we made a point to really emphasize the MC standards and to make sure we created that type of, uh, look that was required for Brentwood bound. On the backside, we actually tried to make it more residential so that it would feel very comfortable with the residents, um, looking upon that from their own homes, um, which you, you quite frankly, you won't even really see with the fence line there. Um, if that answers that question, your last question had to do with MSD. Uh, Brandon's, I think, done a really good job of making sure, because we're the same way. Since we now have cut retaining walls and we're sinking ourselves in below your property, uh, substantially, we wanted to make sure that we had good water flow and stormwater, uh, uh, removal off the site. So we're collecting everything behind the building and taking it out to Helen, um, as well as collecting everything off the parking lots and, and piping it directly into the storm sewers that are downstream of you. So, uh, we certainly shouldn't, with the way we're set in the property, should have no impact on your site.
Yeah, we've actually made a formal dismissal to MSD and, and have actually received comments back. And so we're almost ready to get a plan approval on our stormwater management plan. Um, so we're pretty far along with that process.
Yeah. So I guess the, one of the things we are concerned is so if, if MSD has to access that, they're going to have to come through our property probably instead. Uh, I don't know, what's the distance between, you know, that retaining wall and your fence? If they needed, you know, to get access to that, to that sewer, you know, that, that drainage in our, in the back of our yard.
Yeah, the, the sanitary sewer is actually on your property within an easement. It's not on this property. It's actually on your property within an easement dedicated to MSD. So, um, they would, they could come up from the south or come from the east, um, I guess either way. But they, they could come up from the south and go down the common property line, but the sewer is actually on your property within an easement.
Okay. Yeah, we, we understand. All right.
And Mr. Pullman, I know it's not a point you asked, but I'd like to make the comment. I apologize for not coming by personally meeting you. We want to be good neighbors. We certainly do. Uh, the COVID thing, I, I'm not going to say, suggest that's an excuse. I could have picked up the phone and given you a call. And I'll be happy to do so in the next week.
Good, good to hear. Good to hear. All right. Uh, it's looking like we're, we're running low on time. So we may need to kick this out to subcommittee. Uh, Mr. Salt House, did you have anything you wanted to address the commission on?
I do. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm John Salt House. I own Kingbridge Homes and GWH LLC, which we own the buildings at 8410 and 8412 Manchester Road, which are the two buildings directly across the property, across the street from here. We have approximately eight, 19,000 square foot in our two buildings. Um, we've been a business in business in Brentwood and owned the buildings for the last 15 years. Our buildings have flooded in 2008, 2015, 2016 and 2020. Now I will say I'm a, I am a developer by my nature, but I believe that to, to, for the city to approve redevelopment of the site before they finish their floodplain management in this area. I just don't, I think it's putting the carpet before the horse. I have heard absolutely nothing talking about floodplain management, retention on the site. You know, it looks like it's about 80 to 90% coverage here. You know, I've, I have endured tremendous amount of losses. I've lost tremendous amount of tenants on my property. For you to go ahead and develop a piece of property across the street from me before the, the, uh, the floodplain project is done, I think is irresponsible of the city.
I, I can, I can make, make one comment to that. Um, we did submit a floodplain study also to MSD. And, um, they're, they're about ready to approve that as well. Um, the building location that we have this placed on the site is actually out of the floodplain. So it's not within the existing floodplain at all. The parking lot partially is within the floodplain, but we are matching close to, uh, close enough to the existing topography to not cause. close enough to the existing topography to not cause any change in that. Our onsite stormwater does not directly contribute to a floodplain situation. The floodplain is a much larger tributary area with different peak hours of floods than a localized flood. So this development would have no impact on that. But as far as a floodplain study and the development that we're doing, we are getting and securing the proper permits and plan approvals for that.
Is that something that you'd be willing to put in writing for me? That you're going to have, that you're going to have no impact on my property?
Those are public documents that are available through.
No, I mean, is that something that you would be interested in putting in writing to my company to say that you have no impact?
We'll have to file a floodplain development permit application with the city, which will be public record.
No, I'm just asking. You you said it's not going to have an impact on my property. Are you, would you be willing to put that in writing that you're not going to have any impact on my property?
We'll file, we'll file the proper paperwork with the city for floodplain development permit applications and the Metropolitan Sewer District and both agencies handle stormwater regulations.
So the answer is no.
Yeah, that it sounds like it. Mr. Harp, when do you anticipate getting that MSD response or that MSD comment on your application?
We did get comments back and we're addressing them for a resumé. The comments are minor.
Okay, well, can, would you provide that to the city so we can review it at the subcommittee meeting?
Of course.
Okay, very good. All right, let's open it up to commissioners, understanding that it looks like there's some concerns. We want to lock down at a subcommittee meeting. Are there any commissioners that have some questions or comments tonight on this application?
I have, I'll go with that, Harp. I'll go next.
And just quickly, one to make sure I understand and then one question for the applicant. I understand the goal that it's a paperless is the desire. The trash box being smaller, more residential style. And I do understand that you're looking to increase that what I believe is listed as shell space right now with internal growth. But if it is used for a tenant by a tenant and they have more regular commercial needs, I guess that's just a bit of a concern of would you need to at that point put in more of a traditional dumpster and is that going to change what you would need to do behind the building? Just one thought. And the other one is just to make sure I'm understanding from Ms. Korkmeyer. I see on the staff report, I see we're looking for a 15 foot exception for the front yard setback. So that means that there is a 10 foot setback. I think I read this backwards. And in the rear yard, we're asking for a six foot exception, which means it's going to be a 19 foot setback. Is that correct? So 19 feet in the rear, 10 feet on the side, which would be Helen.
Correct.
Okay, I misread that. Thank you. That's all the questions I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Shipley?
Going back to Mr. Cody Henderson's presentation, when you had the image of the elevation from the back, looking at the retaining wall and looking at the back of the building. What's the drop? And back to Mr. Polium's question in the chat, he wanted to know what the material is for the retaining wall. My question is, what's the drop off? What if a kid in the neighborhood, kids in the neighborhood come and they're walking on that retaining wall? How far down will they fall towards the building? Cody, you're on mute.
Regarding the retaining wall, we're going to have the fencing on the entire north and east side of that retaining wall. We're also going to have dense landscaping, as you see on your landscape plan, up between the wall and the fence up each side. So there won't be any accessibility to to get up there unless you're really trying to get up there behind the retaining wall, which someone have to make an effort to do that. So you can have a, you can have a retaining wall with a fence behind it anywhere and a kid can get up on the wall in some fashion, but we're making provisions where it's not accessible to get up behind that retaining wall.
Understood. How how far is the drop?
It's eight feet at the highest point, then it goes to zero each direction.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners tonight? Okay, so I'll yield to the will of the commission, but my thought is I'd like to see this MSD communications. Hopefully, we can get Mr. Harp and Mr. Frankie together. I don't I don't know if the commission wants to discuss tonight these islands issue. I would think there's a compromise we could reach on that. But otherwise, just get Mr. Harp and Mr. Frankie on the same page. What else is there? I'd like to hear, hopefully, we can get Mr. Polium to show up at the subcommittee meeting and give a double thumbs up to this application. Mr. Solt House, that's probably wishful thinking, but maybe we can get that from him as well. Are there any other questions or comments from commissioners or is there any objection to referring this to the January 27th subcommittee meeting?
Objection. Mr. Chairman, the other thing I think we're looking for was the bleed over for the lighting. Is that?
Right, correct. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Nelson. That's who is that? Mr. Lawless? You're going to put together that Mr. Cannon, we're running low on time. You got, you had a very good report. We, I think we took up your report before you arrived, but did you have something this evening?
Yes, and my apologies, I was having a little trouble zooming. But Mr. Frankie brought up the issue of site distance at the driveway access on Helen. And what I would suggest is that Brandon, as the civil engineer, show the sightlines over the top of the plan, since we're asking for things to come to site plan review with. And that within those sightlines, we would review that there's no obstructions being placed in the sightlines like signs, berms, landscaping and fencing. There can be obstructions in that area. They just need to be lower than three feet and higher than 10 feet. So you can see through the window. So but if they could just show that on the plan and they can, I'm sure they can meet those requirements and then it would confirm safe operating visibility.
Okay, good. So gentlemen, Mr. Sweeney, does that work for your team, January 27th at 6:00 PM Zoom?
Craig, you got any comment?
Yeah, it was ultimately our objective, our objective to get approval tonight because of our schedule and because our lease is ending and we're currently outgrowing our space. So I guess I would wishfully ask for you guys to reconsider. I think we we said we would compromise in the islands. I don't know if these other points are enough to kick it to site plan subcommittee. But if there's any way we could talk through these issues and get it approved tonight, we would just really appreciate that because it saves us two or three weeks, which helps us with our current office needs and other constraints we're dealing with.
So you're willing to yield on all of the Mr. Frankie's recommendations?
The ones that were in the, we're talking about the island, three spaces.
And the, I don't know, did you guys come to a consensus on the ADA issue?
Yeah, Craig, let's just push it off. Long term, we're going to wish we'd not given up that value for.
I think there's, the goal here of the commission is the thought of the commission, my impression is that it's a positive application. I think we we look forward to having you in the community, but I think we also owe it to the residents to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's.
I respect that. We had two things that were bumping our schedule before. One of them's gone away, which with the passage of the stimulus act, and that is the 2020 change in the incentives for the solar. Federal solar tax credits have been extended to 2021 now. So that helps us quite a bit. We were pinching up against having to have our belly done by the end of the year to meet that. So that certainly relieves us some. And Craig and I will talk to our landlord about extending our lease.
Excellent. So if you could get with your your neighbors, in particular, the neighbors that were here this evening, if you could address that lighting issue and if you could, if Mr. Harp and Mr. Frankie could get together and I don't, I don't think we're, I don't, I don't think it's an insurmountable distance between you two.
I don't think so.
And I think I think we can, I think the impression that I get is that this will receive a positive recommendation. So we will look forward to seeing everyone on January 27th virtually at 6:00 PM. Anything else, Mr. Sweeney, from you or your team?
We appreciate your time.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Gentlemen. Okay, Aldermanic report. I see no aldermen or women. City planners report, Ms. Kirkmire?
None this evening.
Subcommittee meeting, can people make this virtually on the 27th? Irrational, we have none. Any other business? Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. In favor? All right, stay on adjourn. Thank you for your time, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Stay safe.